Ladies and gentlemen, I call to order the January the 5th, 2015 Palatane County Board of Supervisors meeting. Chief Singer would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and if you choose, thereafter, I'll lead the invitation.
I want allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, give us the guidance and the wisdom and the patience to do the people's business tonight to the best of our abilities. Amen. Gentlemen, are there any requests to change the agenda as been presented by the county administrator?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to switch item 13 and 14 on the agenda, basically, because their board supervisor by law shows it this way, that it's been listed as the board comments before the county administrator comments, so we'd like to move the county administrator comments before the board comments.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any other requests to change the agenda? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Wyler, will you lead us through the election of the chairman?
Yes, sir. Are there any nominations for the chairman of the board?
Ms. Chairman, or Ms., I guess Ms. Clerk, I should say, of the board. I have a suggestion, and that is, since we do, as we know, have a special election coming up very soon, or actually almost about a month away, for the District 2 seat, and Mr. Moore obviously is running for the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, as we know, and that seat will obviously be built by someone. Obviously, we have two candidates that are running in the second district, and it's a short period of time away, it's not very long. And obviously, the leadership of the board's important, as the county citizenry knows, obviously, that chairperson and vice chairman can set the agenda and run the meetings and organize those things. So it's important who's in that slot, and I think it's important also that the citizens actually get a chance to participate fully in that by having that elected representative present on the board. Who knows how that vote may go with a newly elected representative there, but I think it's a process issue to allow that to happen and take place, since that vote is so close, and we know now that, obviously, that vote will take place, and there won't be an opportunity, obviously, to change that course. It will be set, we voted already on that, and there'll be that election. So I would put that kind of in the form of a motion to defer until the February 17th meeting, where we can actually take action on that, so that that representative, the newly elected representative, could speak for that district, obviously, and, obviously, that will be for the entire year, of course, so that's an important, I think, decision, especially in the board's final year, to let that representative speak to the issue as well, and not necessarily bind that representative's hands with regards to that matter. So I would put that in the form of a motion.
There's a motion to defer the election of the chairman until the...
And vice chairman, it would be both, Madam Clerk.
Chairman and vice chairman, until the February 17th meeting.
Madam Clerk, I will support Mr. Hodge's motion. I think it makes a lot of sense to give that new person, I'm putting myself in the position of that person coming in, I would appreciate the opportunity, if it was me, to have the ability to participate in the election of the leadership for the remaining 10 months. So I'm going to be supporting Mr. Hodge's motion.
You have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I have a motion to nominate Mr. Melton as chairman, and I have a question for the parliamentarian, which would be the county attorney on a point of order. With a motion, if it were to be seconded, which do you take first, a continuance motion or the motion that was, what the floor was open to, the motion to nominate a chairman?
The deferral motion, because it was first in time, and your motion is not an amendment to that, so I just wanted to know what the procedure was.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Clerk, I have a comment. I do agree with Mr. Hodge that leadership is important, but I also think, as many of us have said, when you are a newly elected supervisor, the learning process you go through, and I think that the people that sit on this board have worked together three years, and I think we're more qualified to decide who's going to be the chairman than somebody who gets newly elected. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor of deferring the election of the chairman and vice chairman until February 17th?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
There is a motion on the floor made by Mr. Moore to nominate, and I didn't hear who you said.
Mr. Melton.
Mr. Melton.
Second.
There's a second? Any discussion? All in favor of...
Well, you have to leave the floor, you don't actually need a second, but you need to leave the floor open in case there's any additional nominations.
Oh, I'm sorry, are there any additional nominations? All in favor of Mr. Melton being the chairman?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
I turn it over to the new chairman, Mr. Melton. We're on item 6B, election of the vice chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Open the floor now for election of the vice chair. Do we have any nominations for vice chair?
I nominate Mr. Carson Tucker.
I'll second that motion. Any other nominations for vice chair? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all for favor of Mr. Tucker to be the vice chair.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
No.
Motion passes 3-2. Thank you. We'll move on to resolution R. 2015-0 and adopting the Board of Supervisors 2015 regular meeting schedule.
Mr. Chairman, this item was already adopted by the board at their meeting on December 1st, it was also discussed at their workshop on November 3rd. We have made no changes to the resolution from what you adopted on December 1st, we're just bringing it back to you as a matter of housekeeping, because it says in your bylaws that you will adopt your 2015 regular meeting schedule. I would also like to point out that you previously had directed staff that the second meeting of the month, which is the third Monday of the month, would be a workshop meeting. I stand ready to answer any questions you might have on the resolution.
Any questions on our resolution?
Move to accept resolution R. 2015-1.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Madam Chair, we'll move on to resolution 2015-02, adopting the 2016 budget schedule.
This item is found on page 11 of your agenda. This does not change any of your meeting dates, it does not add to your meeting dates, it just defines what will happen at those meeting dates as they relate to your budget schedule. Stand ready to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff? Do we get a motion, please?
Move to accept resolution R. 2015-02.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Board of Supervisors, bylaws, please.
The bylaws are found on page 16 of the agenda, but I'd like to draw your attention to the red line version, which is, begins on page 27 of the agenda. You discussed this at your workshop on the 15th of December, and we had proposed some changes, you did not want us to make those changes, so I wanted to assure you that we did not make those changes. I'll briefly go through the changes from your current bylaws. On page 28 and 29, at the advice of your attorney, we have deleted the part about filling vacancies on the board, and it just says that they will be filled in accordance with Virginia law. On page 31, the order of the agenda changes certificates of appreciation before public comment time, and it also has a certification of a closed meeting and an adjournment, but I would like to point out that on your existing bylaws, after the second public comment time, first is board comments and second is county administrator comments. That is not how we have been operating for the past year. We have been having county administrator comments up towards the beginning, and you may want to reverse those, because it was our understanding, you may want to have the board comments follow the county administrator comments. We've also added a section on page 32, which shows the order of the meetings that will be the normal order of the meetings for your workshops. We also have wording in here that you will find on page 35 that says that you will have discussion on items, but you may have discussion on items at a regularly scheduled meeting, which is also at a workshop. So we wanted to point out, you will be having discussions at workshops, but you normally will not take actions at workshop unless it's a case of an emergency or a time-sensitive item. So I stand ready to answer any questions, if you may have, on the bylaws.
So, Madam Chair, Ms. Wyler, you're asking that we amend the order to mirror what we did tonight, to move the board comments behind the county administration.
Yeah, so your motion would be to amend the bylaws by reversing those two and then adopt the bylaws as amended, if that's your wish, to flip those, to which we think it is.
Any other questions of staff at this time? The motion, please.
First Chairman, I'll move that we adopt the bylaws as amended with the correction of the county administrator speaking before the board comments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes 4-1. We have our first public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak tonight, but anything that's not on our public hearing agenda, please come forward and speak at this time. Seeing no one, I'll close the public comment period. Point of consent agenda, tonight, on our consent agenda, tonight, we have approval of the December 15th workshop, December 15th regular meeting, and the accepted Virginia Cooperative Extension Court report.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to be adopted, consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. At this time, we'll have a public hearing, and we'll call staff, Mr. March Altman, to the mic, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Happy New Year. This evening, the first of your four public hearings is a request submitted by Southside Electric for the approval of a conditional use permit to construct a 143-foot monopole telecommunications tower and related equipment that would be used to install microwave, radio antenna for their use. In addition, there will be a spot reserved on the tower for county use. The telecommunications tower is a conditional use, the property is, in question, is at 2494 Three Bridge Road, which is the site of their existing substation on Three Bridge. The monopole tower would be added to that site. The property is currently zoned A-10, and therefore, the conditional use permit is required for the telecommunications tower. The proposed height is 143 feet. It should be noted, the original application was for 120-foot tower to accommodate Southside Electric's needs only. After discussion with our public safety entities and our emergency management coordinator, Southside has agreed to increase the pole height from 120 to 143 at their cost to accommodate telecommunications equipment for the county. That has been identified by our public safety folks as a dead area for communication standpoint in the county. The Planning Commission conducted their initial public hearing at their October meeting. At that time, action was deferred at that evening. There were two citizens that spoke at the public hearing that evening, both in opposition. Planning Commission deferred action at the time to allow staff the opportunity to address some of the concerns expressed at the meeting. We've included those concerns and how we addressed them in the staff report. Concerns basically were, Southside was not compliant with the conditional use permit that was granted for the substation, which upon research, we found that they've never been in violation, have always complied with all of the requirements, and actually, in some instances, have more of a buffer than was required, and we have no record of any other violations with regard to the substation. The public hearing, the Planning Commission then discussed the item at their December 2nd meeting, at which time, they voted 3 to 2 to recommend approval to the board of the request. At the meeting, there was some discussion regarding the 500-foot requirement that is in our ordinance, we have a requirement that limits the space 500 feet from the base of the tower to appropriate structures on adjoining properties, residences on adjoining properties. However, at the November board meeting, the board amended the zoning ordinance to allow for, basically, to take the ordinance back to what it was, to allow the board to modify that 500-foot requirement upon the recommendation of both the director of planning and the Planning Commission. With the recommendation for approval, the planning director recommended, I recommended approval of the modification of the 500-foot setback, based on the fact that the proposed tower would be located 200 foot from the nearest property line, which exceeds our 120% of height of tower for, to be closest to the property line, which would allow for, if the tower were to fail, fall like a tree that was cut, it would not venture onto any of the adjoining properties, because it exceeds that tower requirement. Additionally, the dense vegetation buffer that was required by the conditional use permit for the substation provides a substantial buffer, visual buffer, to the adjoining properties now, and would require minimal visual impact to those residential properties located within that 500-foot. The Planning Commission, after some discussion, recommended approval of the request with the 13 conditions that are in your staff report. I know that the applicant has their representative here this evening that is prepared to make a presentation to the board and answer any of your questions. If there's any questions in the board that you have regarding the staff report, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions of staff at this time?
Mr. Melton, Mr. Chairman. March, has there been any changes since our last meeting?
No, sir, no changes at all.
Would the applicant like to make a comment?
Yes, my name is Mike Bender, I'm the Director of Engineering Services for Southside Electric, and I know you have a full agenda this evening, I have a brief PowerPoint just to run through this, Southside and this project, if you bear with me.
It's fine.
Southside Electric Cooperative is a member-owned, not-for-profit electric utility. We were founded in 1937 and serve 18 counties, six towns, and over 50, almost 55,000 residents. We operate 40 substations and over 8,000 miles of line. This is a map of our service territory. To the east, we serve from Petersburg, to the west, all the way out to almost Rowan Oak. Palatane is on the northern bound of our service territory, and we serve down into Mecklenburg County, where geographically, the second largest cooperative in the state. This is a map of our system in Palatane County. Palatane is one of the, we serve more, only Bedford County is any county that we serve more services than Palatane County. And from this map, maybe a little hard to see, but we operate two substations and one transmission station in Palatane County, serving a little over 5,700 services in Palatane. Low growth along 711 and Three Bridge Road created the need for our Fine Creek Substation. In June, on June 12th, 2000, the board approved our conditional use permit to construct the substation, and subsequently, we constructed the station in 2001. It's close to the intersection of Three Bridge Road and Lee's Landing, just to the east on the north side of Three Bridge Road. Here's a little excerpt from the original conditional use permit for the substation, and just an aerial, which shows the substation, and as Mr. Altman described, it does have dense vegetation around all sides of the substation. It's pretty secluded. From my standpoint, it's a well-designed site plan. So why are we asking to communicate with this substation? Today, we communicate with Fine Creek Substation with a Verizon 3G air card. We've lost communications with that substation, on average, a little over 175 hours a year. Most of that's during inclement weather times, and we need communication with the equipment within that substation the most. The microwave link would provide us with a very reliable communication link with the equipment within that substation. It will give us a high data rate capacity, and it will also put us on our private network as opposed to the Verizon network, which is a public network, to give more security for our communications. Again, here's the site plan. What this is showing is the location of the tower. The first circle is the actual height of the tower, as Mr. Altman was talking about, if the tower fell, it couldn't exceed that first circle. The second circle is the county's requirement for the tower height plus 20%, and then you can see by the arrows, those are the two closest residents to the tower location, one being at 330 feet and the other at 390. This is the tower that we've had designed. It's designed with capacity for the county's EMS communications. We think that that's a great joint use. We like to support the local county and EMS when we can, and we're willing to pay the bill to create that capacity to meet that need. So our goal is, again, we're not-for-profit, remember, owned our whole, the reason we exist is to serve the residents of Palatane and the counties we serve. We feel like this is a good project to meet our goal of providing safe, reliable, and affordable electric service for the membership. We ask for the board to approve our conditional use permit, and if you have any questions...
Any questions of the applicant at this time? At this time, thank you, sir.
I just said one.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You said it was an average of 175 hours of non-communication a year, that's about 20 minutes a day. What's the average downtime during inclement weather? Is it an hour, two hours?
We have communication about 98% of the time. 175 hours is about a week. Our SCADA system tracks those statistics, so that could be in and out for short periods of time, that sum together, you know, for that communication. The reason the reliability is so important for us is we can open and close breakers in that substation, so there's safety issues, there's also, we can transfer load between our Palatane substation and our Fine Creek substation during outage events.
Well, my question, what we're designing for, is it, was it a long, are you concerned about like, long outages, where it's an hour, two hours, and that's, or is it more of the just intermittent breaking?
The intermittent breaking can be a big problem for the software we have running to control those devices.
That answers my question, thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, we have a public hearing on ordinance 2014-30 for a monopole, 143-foot monopole. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Can I get a motion, please? Any other comments, questions? I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve, 0214-30.
Second.
I think we have to say the magic words.
Based on public necessity.
It's in the ordinance.
Since it's in the, yes, since it's in the ordinance, you don't technically, so it's written in the ordinance, which it is, you don't actually have to say it.
Thank you.
You're fine. Thank you, Mr. We have a motion on the floor to approve the ordinance 2014-30, it's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Mr. Altman, on to the next public hearing.
Your next public hearing this evening is a request submitted by Mr. Billy J. and Mary K. Payne to rezone their one acre parcel located at 6495 Old Buckingham Road from general commercial C to agricultural A-10. The subject property currently contains a 2,500-square-foot metal shop with attached 250-square-foot storage building. The property has historically been used as an automobile repair and farm machinery repair shop. The applicant indicates that the property will be used to repair farm equipment and for the storage of farm equipment if, after the rezoning is granted. Both of those uses are permitted in the A-10 district, under what we term in the zoning ordinance, the renewed zoning ordinance, as agricultural support indirect, which is a use by right in the A-10 district, and it's defined as uses that support and services to animals and crop production and dairy, or other related agricultural use, either on the site of the agricultural use or off-site. And those uses, we have a list of uses that are to be included, of which farm machinery repair, sales, rental, and service are listed as permitted uses as the definition of agricultural support direct. The applicant's use is consistent with the, generally consistent with the rural preservation land use policies contained in our 2010 land use plan, comprehensive plan, that agricultural and agribusiness uses are recognized as economically desirable, and the designation that agribusiness is an appropriate land use in the rural preservation area. The Planning Commission discussed this request at their December meeting and voted 5-0 to recommend approval to the board. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have. I know the applicant is here, and the applicant's agent is here, if you have any questions for them.
Any questions of staff at this time?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Altman, any changes since the last meeting?
No changes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Altman, I do have one question. So basically, the gentleman's downzoning commercial zoning to A-10.
Yes.
On the future land use map, if he came back before us, could this go back to commercial?
Under the future land use map, no.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
Quick question, Mr. Altman, you know, the dedication issue that we talked about, are we still on board for the dedication of 45 feet at the time of site plan approval?
For this property, we didn't talk about any dedication with the Paynes as a part of this request. I don't think there aren't, at this point, we didn't have any proposed road improvements along this portion of Old Buckingham, so we didn't talk to the applicant.
That's right, you're right, you're right. I retract my question.
Okay.
You're right.
Would the applicant, thank you, any other questions for staff? Would the applicant like to say anything?
No, sir.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have a public hearing on ordinance 2014-31 to conditionally zone one acre of land on 6495 Old Buckingham Road from commercial to A-10. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close this public hearing. Can I get a motion, please?
Move to accept ordinance 02014-31.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Mr. Altman, on to the third conditional.
Your third public hearing this evening is a request submitted by Fine Creek Mill LLC to rezone approximately 5.45 acres located at 2425 Robert E. Lee Road from rural residential RR to agricultural A-10. The subject property currently contains a single-family dwelling, two sheds, and a former store. The applicant indicates that the property would be used as for a country inn with up to 20 rooms, in the form of small cottages with guest registration in the existing historic general store, a private event/meeting room, a microbrew with a tasting room, and a culinary garden. The applicant has applied for a conditional use permit for both the country inn and the microbrew, which is running concurrent with this request, which would be the next public hearing that we have. The proposed uses are both permitted as conditional uses, I mean, excuse me, they're conditional uses in the A-10 district, and the request is generally consistent with the land use policies in the 2010 comprehensive plan. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on the request at their December meeting. There was discussion at that time regarding the right-of-way requirements along 711. The 711 corridor study that was dated February 3rd, 2006, prepared by Michael Baker for VDOT, recommends that the right-of-way requirements for this portion of 711, to address long-term improvements, is 90 feet total, so 45 foot from center line on each side of the road. The improvements discussed in the plan for the corridor study for this segment included widening of the travel lanes, the provisions for grading of shoulders, roadside ditches, and clearing zones. All of the improvements, I will stress, were classified as long-term in that portion of the study. As we indicated, that the request is generally consistent with the rural preservation land use policies contained in the 2010 comprehensive plan, that agriculture and agribusiness uses are recognized as economically desirable, and agribusiness and tourism uses that are compatible with rural character should be encouraged, where the proposed uses will not negatively affect the existing rural or residential uses. The comp plan also states that Pugna Trail is a key historic and highly attractive scenic corridor that should remain to lane. corridor that should remain to lane. To answer, I'm sure, what will be Mr. Hodges' question, there haven't been any changes to the staff report since the last meeting. I would note that the 45-foot right-of-way issue, as we've addressed that in the conditional use permit, as a condition of granting, not as a condition of the rezoning. If there's any questions from the board, I'd be happy to answer them. I know the applicant is here with a presentation.
Mr. Chairman, anyone have any questions of staff?
Yeah.
That's right, again.
I'm going to ask you the question that I asked you the other CUP, by the way, the church chimes, I had to chuckle. I didn't know I was getting an early calling from the Lord or exactly what was coming on, so.
Divine intervention for this case.
This is a different public hearing, but that's okay. Are we going to do this at site plan approval? Is that what we talked about, Mark?
Yeah, what we have is, we included a condition in the CUP. We ran up on a timeline to have it added as a proffer because we have a deadline. So what we did was we added it as a condition. So when we get to the next case, it has changed. We've added a condition requiring the dedication, the applicant, and I'll actually read the condition the way it's worded.
Okay.
That requires that the applicant, the owner or successors dedicate the required ultimate right-of-way of 45 foot from center, at which time in the future the right-of-way is needed for improvement of Huguenot Trail. So they could do it along with site plan approval, but as long as we get it from them at no cost, but prior to the time that we need, we need that right-of-way for improvement, that's what they're requiring.
So that could be 50 years from now?
It could be if we, but at this point in time, this portion of, well, actually, any portion of 711 widening isn't in our six-year plan. So what we would do is, what we could do, it could be 50 years from now, or if the applicant, after site plan approval, after CO wanted to go ahead and get rid of, go ahead and make that dedication, they could. We're just not putting a specific timeframe on in the condition. Certainly, the board could amend that.
How would you bookmark that going forward?
Well, we've got it, we'll have it bookmarked in the fact that we've got to keep a track of all the conditions. We have in our GIS the ability to track the CUPs that are granted for that, so that's one way that we'll do it. But if the board would like to amend it, to have it dedicated within a certain period of time, we can certainly do that.
I guess what I'm concerned about is, you know, that it's not, that dedication to the county is not going to show up anywhere in 50 years.
Right. Yeah.
And it's just easier to go ahead and, I thought, you know, get it out of the way at site plan approval.
We had talked about looking at site plan approval or with the approvals of, or after the COs are approved on the buildings.
Right, right.
So we could do, we could change it to have it that the right-of-way would be dedicated after COs are approved for the property.
I just think it makes it easier for everybody, go ahead and get it out of the way, and if the applicant has a problem with that, you know, I'm certainly amenable to listening to any concerns, but that's just my thoughts, and, you know, some of my colleagues might have some different views. But I've seen how sometimes things get lost over time.
Understood.
And if it's already done, then it'll show up.
Mm-hmm. I don't disagree with you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Altman? So just so I understand, that's not part of the condition for this ordinance to conditionally rezone the 5.5 acres at this time?
That's correct.
It's in the next case.
It's in the next case.
Because I do have, I do agree with Mr. Williams. Hardly, it can get lost in the shuffle. I do have some questions, but I'll save them for the next public hearing.
Okay.
Any other questions of staff at this time?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Altman, just clarify this, maybe Tommy's in chat in here. So I know the applicant had proposed that basically that 45 be done after, proffered after the dedication of the site plan, the site plan approval. Are you saying that you're going to put that in the CUP part, but that's kept to a CUP, not the rezoning? My understanding was the way the applicant brought it and offered, it was the rezoning condition.
It's part of the rezoning, but we have a timeframe of, I believe it's 14 or 15 days prior to the meeting to have the proffer condition in hand. And I, we've been working with the applicant but hadn't finalized that proffer condition by the time that, and we can put it on me, I went on vacation. So when I went on vacation, I didn't have it in hand, so I was preparing the staff report. So what I felt the prudent thing to do was, at that point, was in to put it as a condition in the CUP, so that way it would be covered, and we wouldn't have any concerns about meeting the timeframe requirements in our code.
All right. Follow-up question then with Mr. Williams, to what he suggested was, and I think I'm trying to work this in the right angle, is, tell me if I'm wrong, then that means on the other one, it would be that that condition could be modified, because right now it is, it's just when it's needed. 13 reads kind of when it's needed versus, as the applicant previously proposed, site plan approval. Is that what you're saying? You can put it in the CUP condition and that holds legal value?
Yes.
Tom, that?
You can put it in the CUP condition. I have a little, I actually drafted that language, not Mr. Altman, about the happening at the point of need. Virginia law has got some stipulations on putting conditions and, in fact, on accepting proffers, that they be reasonably related to the rezoning or the CUP. Proffering 45 feet if needed is reasonably related, because it's a commercial use, it's going to increase the amount of traffic on that road. But to require the proffer right up, or the condition right up front, may be a little bit more problematic, because we may never widen that road, as Mr. Altman pointed out. And so I was actually the one that worded that language that way, so that it is reasonably related to the need on the road actually coming into being. If the applicant wanted to proffer it under the rezoning, that's a little bit of a different issue, but on a condition that's imposed upon the applicant, and that's to be reasonably related to the CUP that we're granting, and I was a little bit uncomfortable with the idea that we, there's an immediate need for 45 feet for what may never happen on that road, so that, it's not Mr. Altman, but me that actually drafted that language that way.
Mr. Chairman, follow-up question, Tom. Would that same reasoning apply? Got your two-track reasoning. Would that same reasoning apply to the change to say, well, do it after site plan? CUP versus conditional rezoning?
Well, where the issue, and if the applicant voluntarily does it, we're fine.
Right.
But making it a condition that you must do it on such and such a date, a little bit more problematic. And so, like I said, I was the one that kind of created that squishy language and created the problem for Mr. Altman. But it was the concern that if some issue or dispute arose, can we actually defend that it's reasonably related to this current CUP today to require the immediate dedication, if that makes sense?
Mr. Chairman, that goes back to my original question then. Wouldn't it be more conducive, I know the applicant had done this, I think, put it forward in the rezoning request, it's a little bit different animal than the conditional use of, if I'm hearing you correctly, is putting that proffer thereafter site plan approval, rather than maybe sticking it in the CUP? I guess it's back to my original question. I'm trying to find the...
If the applicant wanted to voluntarily proffer that on the rezoning, we certainly are open to receiving voluntary proffers.
And we could move to amend and just say we adopt the ordinance as presented but amended to what the applicant has.
Well, we're not in any way suggesting that they proffer that.
Right, exactly.
But if they wanted to proffer that.
Exactly, they want to proffer that, that's fine. And I just, I'm just taking that from the original record of the way it was presented, that's all. I'm going back to what the applicant had called.
We're no way, shape, or form suggesting that they make such a proffer, but if they wanted to make such a proffer on the rezoning, they certainly could.
And that's the way I read, if we need to, maybe we hear from the applicant, but that's the way I read the report, Mr. Altman, if I'm right. That was the original offer.
That was the original intent.
Okay, all right, sir.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So the way I'm seeing this being played out is there's three possible scenarios. One is keep it the way it is, which is when it becomes applicable or needed, the 45 foot is going to come into place on the conditional use permit. Option two, we could try to say that it's got to be a proffer, but then you'd have problems, because you couldn't ju, you may not be able to justify the 45 foot to the proffer.
No, no. Again, we can't request proffers, but if the applicant wanted a proffer on this case, we'd be happy to receive it. I'm sure, I can't speak for the board, but I assume you'd be happy to receive that proffer.
Right.
Or we can make it a condition with a time certain.
Okay, that was next, it was the condition.
A condition, it just raises a slight legal tick, because is that reasonably related to the current use?
Okay.
I mean, I can argue that it is, but as Mr. Altman pointed out, there's no immediate plan to do any improvements on 711, so that was a little bit of a concern.
Okay, now I've got it straight. So it's basically that's straight, thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Williams, I'll go next, because I think you're going to go where I'm going to go anyway.
Bill and I are looking at each other, because I think we're going to have some similar questions, based on the history of proffers and the way that we've gone about that in this county, and it has changed over time.
And the law in Virginia has changed.
Proffers are voluntary.
Completely.
We get that. And the reason people make proffers is to mitigate some situation that's out there, either presently or in the future, that's going to be problematic. So the developer makes that proffer to mitigate that situation that's identifiable either currently or in the future, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, going back to your position, you know, that, you know, we can't require, no, we can't require any proffer as a condition of a rezoning. We get that. We've been there before, and we're doing it. So is it reasonable, and the reason I'm asking this question is because of looking to the future, you know, we're going to have more of these cases, we're going to have the issue of dedications, I'm thinking on Route 60, for example, and I want to have certitude in terms of how the county, and I know the development community wants the same certitude, as to what our policy is going to be, how it's going to be applied, and what are the circumstances? So.
Well, unfortunately, Virginia General Assembly keeps making the law on proffers more nebulous and more difficult, and that's not our fault, that's, and they're about to go in session again, but anytime the General Assembly is in session, they mess things up, and they have, they have compounded the difficulties with the issue of proffers, and there's actually statutory attorney's fees provisions now on proffers that are accepted improperly. And so the General Assembly has actually made it much more difficult and problematic to properly deal with proffers, and that's why I'm pointing out, we're not in any way, shape, or form suggesting, if the applicant wishes to proffer that, that's fine, but we're, you know, we can't, probably shouldn't suggest what they proffer. But I, we can make it a condition of the CUP, and, you know, if the board wants to put that condition right up front, we can. I felt more comfortable with it being at the point of need, but if the board wants to put it, we can defend it doing it that way.
Bill, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to suggest that, you know, maybe we have a workshop on this issue of dedication and proffers going forward at some point, so that maybe the county attorney can bring us up to speed of what is the most current situation with the Code of Virginia and the General Assembly.
I agree 100 percent. I know in my years with the Planning Commission and yours and Carson's, we many times got right-of-way dedication for future, for future road improvements that we deem to be a safety condition, and I see this as nothing else that's very similar to that. So yes, I think we should have it in a workshop.
Well, something like Route 60 is a little easier, because we know, I mean, that's in the plans, we already, we foresee the widening, and so it's a little easier on 60. 711, as Mr. Altman pointed out, there are no immediate or even long-term plans to do any improvements, and so it's a little more difficult to determine.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Williams, go ahead.
In the Route 711 corridor study, you've got all those improvements for geometrical improvements, you know, it's not necessarily widening and going to full lanes, it's straightening, it's improving shoulders, you know, recovery zones and things like that. So it's not just widening that we're looking at.
Well, that's, I'm comfortable with it being in a CUP. I'm comfortable if the applicant wanted to proffer it on the rezoning. We're just being cautious in our wording.
Any other questions of staff at this time?
You didn't add, Mr. Altman, after your brief discussion?
Would the applicant like to say anything or come to the mic and present at this time? Please, all means come.
Would you like us to comment now, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
But this is not on this rezoning, correct? It's part of the cup that we're discussing it.
We are, right now, having a public...
But I'm glad you talked about it now.
We're not talking about the cup, we're talking about the rezoning at this moment.
The rezoning, but the rezoning does not have this condition in it, correct?
Because the proffer was not made.
Correct. So if you would like how we feel about it, we can discuss that right now, or we can wait till the cup comes up. What would you prefer?
Whatever you feel comfortable with.
Last month, it was introduced to us about the 45-foot right-of-way, and so after much length, we realized that that was something that you were asking for in case there was a need for it down the road. We are totally comfortable giving you that 45-foot right-of-way when you need it, is where we feel more comfortable as applicants. We feel if that's our land, there's no reason for you to own that as a county. We'll pay taxes on it, we'll take care of it. We don't feel that there's ever a need to widen 711. If it does, then it's in the books that we've given you the right-of-way. At that time, you can have it. That's how we feel. So once it becomes yours, you pay taxes on it, not us, correct? Or you don't gather taxes from us on it, so.
That's how we felt.
Okay. Any else you want to present or talk about at this time? Okay. All right, we're going to have a public hearing on ordinance to conditionally rezone 5.5 acres of land located at 2425 Robert E. Lee Road from RR Rural Residential District to A10 Agricultural District with proffered conditions. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Any other questions of staff at this time?
Mr. Chairman.
Comments? Mr. Hodges?
Mr. Lashley, just let me get this clear if I'm right. I'm reading through the ordinance, I've read it once, I'll read it again, and after the applicant has spoken, and the title, obviously, there are proffered conditions on this.
There are no...
We're not talking about the cup. We're talking...
There are no proffers here.
Okay, all right, so, and that's why, all right, so there's no, and that's what I thought, I want to be clear on that. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Can I get a motion, please?
Yes. With that being said, for the record, move to amend the ordinance as presented by, that is, ordinance 0-2014-32, striking the third whereas clause, and as to the fifth whereas clause, striking end proffered amendment slash removal after that clause. With that amendment, I would move to approve it as amended. I think I did that right, Mr. Lashley.
You're striking the language about the proffer.
Correct.
Could you repeat the paragraphs again? I was trying to find the ordinance.
Yes, once again, I move to approve ordinance 0-2014-32 as amended, striking the third whereas clause in its entirety, and as to the one, two, three, four, fifth whereas clause, just striking the language, end proffered amendment forward slash removal. Other than that, I move to amend, and of course, it already has the language necessarily in there that this is in the public necessity convenience, general welfare, and/or good zoning practice to support approval of this rezoning request.
It might be helpful if we read it out to the poll just, because I don't know, they have copies. I mean, the third paragraph says, whereas Fine Creek Mills LLC through its representative Lisa Benusa has submitted a statement of proffer in conjunction with the rezoning request. The fifth paragraph that warns that would be struck were proffered amendment renewal, removal, excuse me? Is that correct?
Yeah, I could, I mean, I can do that, that's fine.
I just want to make sure that, because not, everyone has a copy.
No, I'll read it, I'll read it. I didn't want to belabor the point, but I'll read it in its entirety then. I move to approve ordinance 0-2014-32 as amended, striking, quote, whereas Fine Creek Mills LLC through its representative Lisa Benusa has submitted a statement of proffer in conjunction with the rezoning request, end quote, that's stricken, and striking, not the following, but reading the following, quote, whereas public necessity convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practice, and/or good zoning practice support approval of this rezoning, and then striking the language, quote, end proffered amendment forward slash removal, end quote. That's my amendment, or that's my motion as amended on the floor. I think I've got that. Any questions?
I did for the attorney.
Go ahead, Mr.
Does this in any way affect the next issue, which is the conditional use permit, and how this ordinance is...
No, it doesn't. It doesn't affect the conditions of the...
I'll make a second to the motion.
We have a motion on the floor to amend per Mr. Hodg, seconded by Mr. Tucker. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Mr. Altman, move us on to the next ordinance, please, public hearing ordinance.
Your fourth and final public hearing this evening is a request submitted by Fine Creek Mill LLC for a conditional use permit to operate a country inn and microbrew on the subject parcel, the 4.5.4 acre parcel that located at Huguenot Trail at 2425 Robert E. Lee, adjacent to Huguenot Trail. Subject property is now zoned A-10, and as a result of the action you just had taken, both microbrew and country inn are listed as conditional use in the A-10 district. The applicant plans to operate a country inn with up to 20 rooms in the form of small cottages, ranging from one to two bedrooms, and have a separate structure for private events, guest check-in, they would also have the microbrew, which would have attached to it a meeting area and a tasting room. Planning Commission discussed this at, and held a public hearing at their December 2nd meeting. At that meeting, they voted to recommend approval of the request. The subject, and to answer Mr. Hodg's request, the Planning Commission, this is different from when we talked about it the last time, because we added condition number 13, which states, whereas increased commercial activity along Huguenot Trail, Route 711 may require future improvements to Huguenot Trail and the area adjacent to the subject property, therefore, the applicant, Fine Creek Mill LLC, the owner, Lee Nguyen, and/or their successors shall dedicate to the county of Palatine, at no cost to the county, the necessary land adjacent to Huguenot Trail, Route 711, required to provide an ultimate right-of-way width of 45-foot from center at such time in the future that the right-of-way is needed for improvements to, improvements to the portion of Huguenot Trail adjacent to the subject property. So that is the only change from when we had discussion on this item at the December 15th meeting. If there are any questions of the board, I would be happy to answer them, I know they have a presentation, the applicant has a presentation for you, but I'm here to stand, ready to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff at this time? Would the applicant like to make a presentation or comments at this time?
All right, good evening, everybody. My name is Mark Benusas. I'm with my family, we own and operate the mill at Fine Creek, many of you know, it's our wedding venue here in Palatine. I have put together a short presentation, just to kind of go with what Mr. Altman has already told you, in regards to our rezoning application and also our conditional use Our goal in this project is to create a country inn and farm brewery on a small scale that blends seamlessly into Palatine's historical and agricultural surroundings in order to provide an amenity to our couples and also fulfill a need in our community. A quick overview, some things I want to touch on, it's our successful track record with our current conditional use permit at the mill at Fine Creek, our desire to remain competitive by fulfilling a need, how the new project will act as an amenity to the mill, the small scale and minimal impact of the project, how a business like ours can help to support local agriculture, and also how this new venture can help to establish a benchmark for future growth within our community. I want to start with track record, and that's the one that, again, that we've already established through our current business, the mill at Fine Creek, and when we started the mill, we, the idea of hosting just a few weddings a month sounded like a great success to us. Since then, we've grown to almost 100 weddings a year, and even with that growth, we feel that we've maintained the minimal negative impact on our neighbors. Our current conditional use permit turned 10 in July, and we have yet to have a single complaint over the past decade regarding that conditional use permit. We have gone above and beyond to adhere to the conditions set forth in our original cup, and whether it's been 30 weddings a year or 100, we've never let our growth affect those promises we made to the community and our neighbors, and we've always been aware of the impact on those around us. Our service in the community is also something that we've taken very serious, we've hosted many events over the past decade for the county itself, and then also for nonprofits, local nonprofits. Just last month, we had Habitat for Humanity Dinner, we also had Sheriff Deputy Party back in December, and we've been doing that ever since we opened. What got us originally talking about this new project was our desire to stay competitive. We found that as we were giving tours to our prospective brides, it started mentioning some of the other places that they were visiting for their wedding, there was places that they're going to afterwards, places they had just come from, and the names that they started mentioning were not the venues that we were used to hearing, but instead, they were some of Virginia's top destinations, like Keswick, Pippin Hill, and the Jefferson in Richmond. We realized at that point that we really had to up our game. And along with these already established locations, new ones were also beginning to open in surrounding counties like Goochlin, and we refuse to be caught flat-footed. We've always tried to stay ahead of the curve and anticipate the needs of our customers, which brings us to accommodations, which we found is a need too big to ignore. Many of the guests from our weddings are coming from out of town and need accommodations, and quite frankly, we're tired of having to send them out of the county to places like Short Pump, while they take their revenue with them. Our own overnight accommodations will not only keep those guests where they are, eliminating the need for back-and-forth driving between rehearsal dinner and reception, but also keep them in our own community while allowing us to remain competitive so we can continue our success. The inn and farm brewery that we're proposing will act solely as an amenity to the mill, and this will kind of be a central theme for our entire project. What I mean by this is that the mill will remain our main source of income, and because of that, the inn and brewery will never be allowed to negatively affect the mill. We would be crazy to be proposing anything that would detract from the beauty and privacy that our couples currently get to experience at the mill. We plan to continue to execute the business model that we've been implementing over the past 10 years, which involves slow, thoughtful growth, never embarking on something that's bigger than we can handle, and never allowing our growth to be detrimental to those around us. The farm brewery will also act as an amenity by allowing us to produce a physical product, which is something we've yet to be able to do. It'll give us an opportunity to brand ourselves to a market beyond the traditional market that we're in right now. I just want to touch on the small-scale concept, and the idea of this, especially the farm brewery, is a very important topic, because the terms microbrewery and farm brewery, they're thrown around a lot, and they cover such a huge range of brewery sizes and shapes. So, I put together a little graph that you guys hopefully have in front of you, so you can see it a little bit better, but I just wanted to show you some of the annual production of some of the areas more well-known breweries, to give you an idea of where we're gonna land with our production, kind of what that small-scale concept means. These numbers are in barrels, which is about 32 gallons, to give you an idea, and these are annual production for these breweries. So, I just want to start with where we, as a pilot brewery, which is where we plan on starting, aim to be with our production, just right about there. After what will most likely be a year or two of working with this pilot system, we'd love the opportunity to jump up to a larger system. Even our larger system, we're still only planning on producing at max about 1,100 or so barrels a year. So, to give you an idea of some of the other local breweries, I've put Licking Hole Creek, which is in Goochlin, on there, Blue Mountain Brewery in Nelson County, Hardywood in Richmond, and of course, Legend. So, you can see the vast difference between the different breweries, all still considered microbreweries, and still well within the confines of that term, microbrewery. I had Stone on there for their new production facility in Richmond, but it just dwarfed the graph completely. Stone's new production facility in Richmond, within their first year, they plan on producing 10 times what Legend does annually. Their brew system itself, their brew kettle, in one brew, one few hours that it takes to brew that batch, will be what we will produce an entire year. Our ability to be such a small-scale operation stems from the concept of being an amenity to the mill, like I mentioned, by acting in conjunction with an already established and larger business, we're allowing our brewery to remain small. Most other breweries cannot afford to remain at the size that we wish to be at, because they're constantly chasing profits and production in order to satisfy investors. As a result, they end up huge where we can be tiny. This business model, in our opinion, allows for a much more exciting concept. It means small production, which means small numbers, which allows us to remain a producer of truly craft beer. By remaining small, we can ensure what we talked about early, which is our goal of never detracting from the mills, and as a result, our neighbors' privacy. We'll have the opportunity to support local farmers with their manageable batch sizes, and we'll also be able to grow many of our own ingredients for testing, while still having the time and energy to implement green business practices. The end result will be quality, not quantity. Through our own agricultural efforts to support the local farmers and adaptive reuse of existing historical structures, we hope to help preserve Palatine County's many assets, and maybe even help to put Palatine on the map as one of the area's larger producers of food. We started looking into some of the things that Palatine already grows that are great for brewing, and also thought of some things that could be grown, and the list just kept growing. What a lot of people don't realize is how great our area actually is for growing a lot of these things, things that are already used and viable beers across the country, but especially hops. There's a farm down on Huguenot Springs Road called Huguenot Hop Farm that has had a lot of success growing hops, and it's kind of been proof to people in the area that said, you know, you couldn't do that around here, and in 2015, they're slated to double production compared to what they were at last year, and be one of the largest in the state. I know Hardywood, I think brews one beer entirely from their hops. We could be Virginia's first wedding venue inn and brewery, and we would love the chance to show that it can be done right. We see this project as a chance to set a benchmark in our community and even the state, and we want the opportunity to do it right here in Palatine. This project will allow us to remain competitive, and it'll prove that small community inns and breweries are not just a thing of the past. I've put a few of our renderings up here, which we have on phone board in the back, so people are welcome to see those if it is difficult to see here, but it just gives you an idea of the feel and the look that we're going for. They give you an idea, the general store that exists right now, that will be guest registration for the inn, is at the bottom-left corner of that. There's a few more angles across the property. And that's about it. I did want to say really quick, you know, when I was back in Palatine High School, the old Palatine High School, if somebody had told me that down the road, I'd be up here in front of you guys gushing over the beauty and merits of Palatine County, I probably would have said, you're crazy, get me out of here. But 12 years later, this is where I am, because I truly believe that this county has a lot to offer, from its history, its agriculture, and its people. I think it has the potential that has just begun to be tapped, and we'd really like the opportunity to be able to share that with those that have yet to notice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Benusas. Any questions of the applicant at this time?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Williams.
I believe I asked this question before, how soon can you have this done?
How soon can we have it done? As soon as possible.
Come on now. And the reason I'm asking that question, because each one of us up here on stage is thinking the same thing. The best economic development that you can have in a county comes from existing businesses, and yours is certainly one of the premier businesses in this county. So, to have the expectation that you're going to enlarge on what you've been doing over the years is exciting for every one of us up here on stage. And, you know, the fact that we could use the taxes, you know, that...
Some jobs.
Comes into it a little bit. And the other thing, I want to thank you, you mentioned the brewery that's come into Richmond, you didn't ask us for any money, did you?
That's true.
Thank you.
Thank you for saying that.
Really, Mr. Williams, just once I get to be the first one to taste a beer, I can tell you.
Yeah, sounds like it.
Anyway, any other questions of the applicant at this time? At this time, we have a public hearing on conditional use permit, 0-2014-33. Anyone wishing to come forward, please do so at this time.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ms. County Administrator, my name is Ernest Barrow, my wife Shirley and I reside in Mill Road, Palatine, Virginia. I come before you tonight asking you to grant this conditional use permit. He kind of took my thunder away when I talked about this past track record. I was gonna repeat some of that, but there's no need to be repetitive. I think they've done a heck of a job here in this county, the county should be very proud of it, and I see no reason that this new business will not follow the pattern of the old one. Thank you very much.
I'm David Zaletti, 2630 Huguenot Trail, and I'm a neighbor of the Benusas. The mill at Fine Creek has been a good neighbor to my family and a wonderful asset to Palatine County. Two of my teenage sons work at the mill, as do several other children that live in the immediate Fine Creek area. The Benusas have gone above and beyond to operate such a fine venue over the past 10 years, and I feel this expansion should be approved with open arms. I chaired the tourism board and sat on the Route 711 Advisory Board for the county when they existed, and what is proposed here fits the vision that many of us thrived to achieve for this significantly historic part of the county. I fully support this rezoning and CUP, with CUP now, and would be happy to answer any questions relating to my experiences with the Benusas. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zaletti. Welcome, Mr. Germaine.
Hi. My name's Steve Germaine, I live on Robert E. Lee Road, I'm a neighbor, one house up from the mill. As I said at the last meeting, initially, 11 years ago, I opposed this project, but having had them as a neighbor for 10 years, they've been an excellent neighbor, they've done everything they've committed to do, everything they've done to the property, and the upgrade of the mill itself, the expansion they've done, and even including the rear house they built, they've all upgraded the neighborhood, I really feel like they've done the neighborhood a big favor, just with the upgrades they've done to the existing structures on Robert E. Lee Road. This is just another upgrade of existing structures on Robert E. Lee Road, and I'm fully in favor of it. We can stop at any time, we see them out in the driveway, we stop, talk to them like we would any other neighbor, and as far as this brewery goes, Lisa asked me about the brewery over a year ago, so I've known about it, that they want to do it for a while, so this is not a surprise. It just goes to show how well we communicate back and forth. The other issue I had at the meeting last month was the traffic issue, and this will be an ongoing solution to solve it, you're dealing with the state and the Highway Department, and it's just, we're taking, I'm patient, as long as people are aware of the problem, and we can go forward with some type of resolution of the problem in the future, I'm happy with it. So, grant their wish and let them do their business. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Germaine, may I ask you a question?
Yes.
Being as you live on Robert E. Lee, we had talked about it last meeting, I believe, about the feasibility of working with VDOT to cul-de-sac that entrance, which I understand is unsafe.
I think it is. When I leave my house, I live up the hill from there.
Right.
When I leave my house, I go down the hill around by the mill and out to 711, because when you go out the top, you cannot see either way, you, it's limited visibility both ways to pull out, and people go up there, you listen for traffic at night, you look, wait for headlights or something. I don't, we don't use the top of the hill as an accident.
Are the other neighbors, and are they like-minded with you, that that needs to be cul-de-sac up there where it's unsafe?
The ones I've spoken to, the mills, the Jeff Mills family agree with me, they also live on Robert E. Lee Road, we've talked about the problem with the top of the hill, that trying to get out the top of the hill is really a problem. We don't use it because we feel it's unsafe.
And I believe the applicant is in favor of this also, seeing his go up and down there. Bill, I recommend we follow up with VDOT, see what we can do to, you know, improve the safety at that intersection, and if it's cul-de-sac, and that's something we can work with VDOT on doing, my recommendation is to move forward.
Absolutely. I thought after our last meeting that March kind of had his, for lack of a better word, marching orders, but make sure that we understand that's the top of the hill, not the entrance that currently at the bottom of the hill for the mill.
Right, it's the top.
It's the top of the hill. Thank you, Mr. Germaine.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, I'll close the public hearing on this conditional use permit. Can I get a motion here? Any questions of staff or any comments at this time?
Comment, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Tucker.
I particularly like Mr. Benusas' presentation where he remarks upon wishing to be the benchmark. It's not a mistake, it's not an accident, and in our vision statement for this county, our number-one strategic objective revolves around the concept of doing everything in our power to support the agricultural industry here, and build upon it as part of the hallmark of what Palatine has always, and we want always to look at. So, I like very much that here is someone stepping up the bat and saying, hmm, we hear you, and we can do this, and we can do it in such a way that it does indeed lend itself to being a benchmark to how future such ag industry businesses can be done. Thank you for putting in it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments? I'd like to make one before we have a motion, please. Again, I was like Mr. Germaine, I opposed this the first time it came before me on the Planning Commission because of the traffic concerns, and once it came back for renewal, I realized that the Benusas did what they said they were gonna do, they controlled the traffic, and I voted for it subsequently when it came back before me on the Planning Commission. I applaud you for an investment in the county, I applaud you for setting the standard, agro businesses... Agribusiness is something we've been working on since I was on the Planning Commission. We have an agro-farm not far from me that has a little store that sells cakes and pies and fruit baskets and barbecue and all kinds of things, and people come and they turn in there and they buy it, thank goodness, and they, hopefully some of them stay and some of them leave. This is, to me, an extension of all that. I do have a daughter-in-law who used that facility and got married. It'd be nice to have a few more people have been able to stay there. That might have been a little safer, but I applaud you for the investment in the county, and I'm truly looking forward to the day you get the doors open. I'm like David, hurry up. So anyway, at this time, I'll call for the motion.
Mr. Chairman. Please go ahead. To Mr. Hodg's question, condition number 12, you changed the date from their previous plan that was provided until last year, so that was the updated fight plan that was made out of last year. So the date was changed, so it now reads that the date, the plan is dated 12/11/2012.
Thank you, Mr. Hodg. I appreciate that. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hodg, go ahead.
I move to approve ordinance zero dash 2014 dash 33 as presented.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Thank you. At this time, we'll have a discussion, excuse me, an action item, and I'll turn this over to Ms. Wyler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item is found on page 237 of your agenda. It is a policy of the board dealing with debt post issuance, post-closing compliance. You reviewed a draft of this at your December 1st workshop. The...
May we wait a second, just let people clear up, Ms. Wyler, not trying to be...
Please, this time.
Because I can hear, I can't hear you over the rustling person.
You discussed this at your December 1st workshop. The policy is found, starting on page 239, but I'd like to draw your attention to the redlined copy, which is, you reviewed this again, and we are showing you the changes that we made since you saw it on December 1st. Much of what is on page 252 really belongs in your wherethas, it doesn't belong in a policy. It's background information, and we've included that in a wherethas. The other, and so that's why you see most of page 252 has been removed from the policy. The other thing that we've changed is it called for a position called Compliance Officer, and they wanted us to designate a Compliance Officer. It always has been the Director of Finance who has handled this, and we have just removed the language of Compliance Officer and just put in Finance Director. With that, I stand ready to answer any questions that you may have on the policy.
Any questions of staff?
Mr. Chairman, I believe at the last meeting, this was, maybe Mr. Lashley can address this too, or Ms. Wyler, this was basically drafted by bond counsel, is that correct?
Yes. Yes, sir, it was, yes.
And so what Ms. Wyler has done, and along with county attorneys, cleaned up all the stuff that came from bond counsel that was basically not needed in their estimation. Any questions? Can I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve our 2014 dash 114.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero. At this time, we'll have another public comment period. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak, please do so at this time. Please state your name and address. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment period. County Administrator, comments?
Yes, I just have two comments. One of them is that I wish to congratulate Mr. Chris Rapp. He's our Director of Public Works. He's accepted the position of Director of Public Works at Stafford County. It's a great opportunity for Mr. Rapp. We're, however, are very sad to see him go, me especially. He was a great support to me when I first came on board. He was actually the only department director that I had at the time when I came on board. His last day with the county will be Friday, January 23rd. Also, I wanted to clarify two comments or discussions that we had at the December 15th meeting, and they both had to do with award of contracts for RFPs, and I wanted to clarify that under Virginia public procurement law, once you have held interviews and you have selected a potential candidate to award a contract to, you do go what's through, you do go through what's called a negotiation with that responder, and if you aren't successful with the negotiations, you're allowed then to go to the next successful responder and continue negotiations until you reach a contract, and you don't make an announcement of who's awarded the contract until such time as you have completed successful negotiations. And therefore, we were not able to, as I stated at the December 15th meeting, we did not announce the next day who we awarded the reassessment contract to because we were going through negotiations with the most successful bidder, and we did, though, announce that we awarded that contract to our current assessor, and I believe the name is Wampler, Wampler, Inc. Thank you very much. And we have awarded that contract. On the Economic Development Strategic Plan, we still are in the negotiation process. We have not reached an agreement, and so we are not yet ready to announce who we're awarding that contract to because obviously we don't yet have a contract. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
At this time, we'll have the board comments. Anybody, anyone have any comments tonight?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Hodg.
Just wanted to mention something to the public, and that is, is sometimes, we sometimes thinks that the, it's always better to defer to experts, you know, in society and life because they're the ones that will rely on to guide us in decision-making. Just want to make one comment. This board, obviously, is elected, and we represent the people, and certainly we may have our own facets of perhaps what might be qualified as expertise, but in the end, when we serve, we serve in a representative capacity, because if you go back to the founding of the nation, there was an essential disagreement. Who was sovereign? Was it the will of the people, or was it the king? Obviously, the republic was founded on the fact that the will of the people was the sovereign, and therefore, when it comes to the issues of liberty or exercising liberty, and when it comes to representation of those liberties, which we do on your behalf for the four-year term we're elected, it's always dangerous perhaps to make a statement to the effect that either we're the experts or we're going to rely on the experts exclusively. The reason for that is, is that you can fall into a pattern or practice of circumventing the will of the full exercise of the will of the people, and that's something that you want to take pause for because even if liberty isn't handled responsibly by the people, perhaps sometimes it isn't, that's not a reason necessarily to pull back on that. That's the risk of liberty. That's why we have what we have. When you start doing that or believing in that issue of perhaps the rule of the experts, whoever they may be or wherever they may sit, it's a dangerous proposition to start walking down that road or making decisions based on that. Certainly, you want to be informed perhaps by experts, but in the end, the person that makes that decision is ultimately responsible to the people and the sovereignty of the people and allow that full exercise. So that's just something, food for thought this evening to think about, that as we move forward, obviously, in this year on the board, to keep that in mind, that that full exercise of sovereignty of the people with the election that's coming up is respected, good, bad, or ugly, whether you like it, you don't like it, doesn't matter. It's there for a really good reason, and some patriots spilled a whole lot of blood over it, thinking it was that important to fight over. So I just want to make that statement just for some clarity purposes and just remind you of your history. Thank you.
Any other comments? Have a couple quick ones. One reminder to us that we, that we need to make sure we have our appointments for the Agricultural Forest and District. I think, Mr. Williams, you had one, Jason, you had one, and Barry, you had one that needed to have some discussion, and if they are going to reapply, please have them fill the permit out. That was left from last month's meeting. I would like to say today, we got emailed the Virginia Public Library Survey. I read some of it briefly. It would be something I think we should all read. It's pretty interesting data I saw in there. Also, last month on the consent agenda, we had Phil Scott's Section B of Huguenot Springs Preserve, where he turned, he finished his roads and turned them into VDOT, and it was that we approved it. I want to applaud Mr. Scott because when we had our first workshop back several months back, he called me afterwards, said he would get his roads ready and turn them into the, into the system by the end of the year. He met his deadline. I applaud him for that. Martin Luther King Junior Day and National Mentoring Day is January 19th at Palatine United Methodist Church. Want to remind everyone about that. Also, I'd like to say to the Fire Chief Report, thank you for the Fire Chief Report you've been sending out. I want to recognize Leon Snyder, who was involved in teaching 33 of 37 classes to a group of students. It's pretty impressive and a dedication of time. Please share with him our gratitude for that. And, let's see, one other comment. And I do wish Mr. Chris Rapp the best in his next endeavor and look forward to the addition of a new person to the leadership team. Thank you. We have Mr. Williams.
We have a meeting at the Richmond Regional Planning District Commission at 9:00 a.m. this Thursday. The whole entire meeting is dedicated to the issue of sludge and industrial sludge spreading in the Commonwealth. You're going to have experts there, you're going to have people from Virginia Tech, you're going to have people from the federal state agencies there. This is an opportunity to get any questions that you have answered. It should be a good meeting. Again, it's dedicated solely for the discussion of this issue. The other thing I'd like to say is, received a report from the Department of Game and Inland Fisheries, which stated that the deer harvest this year is about 17% back from what it was year-to-date. What they're attributing it to is a couple of factors. One is hemorrhagic. They found that it's much worse than what they had originally envisioned. If you go around Palatine County, it's situational as to where it's impacted. I know over at my house, all you got to do is come over and look at the azaleas, it hadn't touched them over there. But you go to some places around the county, and you'll talk to guys, and I know Billy Hunt's, they're not seeing deer. So again, it's situational depending on where you're at. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments at this time? Mr. Moore, would you lead us into closed session, please?
We've gone into closed session, sure. Virginia Code Section 2.2, 3712, and 2.2, 3711A3 of the Dakota, Virginia, to discuss or consider the acquisition of real property for public purpose where such discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position of the board, and under the Virginia Code, Section 2.2, 3711A7, to obtain legal consultation regarding legal matters which require legal advice. Yeah, that, it's not the most eloquent, but we were, we had to guess it on the fly.
We got it.
Yeah.
I'll make a second to that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, you say five, just want to see if we're doing four. What am I, clerk?
Recede the Palatine Board Supervisors Meeting. Madam Clerk, will you poll the board?
Do you certify that, to the best of your knowledge, only matters discussed in the closed meeting were public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters is why, were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting just conducted? Mr. Williams?
I was going to say I did, but I realized I wasn't at the chat.
I do. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Hodg?
Aye.
Mr. Mountain?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
So, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned. So, David, you've been...